All right, we'll be starting here in a minute. We just want to make sure we have a good connection with our one board member who's calling in. So thanks for your patience. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the recording of attendance. All board members are present with the exception of Stephen Mond, who is actually representing us at an LCTI meeting tonight. We had a meeting on the same night, so instead of being here, he's representing us on another board and we thank him for that. I just wanted to say that. And also, we have, although not physically present, calling in Ms. Mary Joy Reinards. Ms. Reinards, can you hear us and can we hear you?
I hear you just fine.
Thank you so much. All right, could I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, we'll be starting here in a minute. We just want to make sure we have a good connection with our one board member who's calling in. So thanks for your patience. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the recording of attendance. All board members are present with the exception of Stephen Mond, who is actually representing us at an LCTI meeting tonight. We had a meeting on the same night, so instead of being here, he's representing us on another board and we thank him for that. I just wanted to say that. And also, we have, although not physically present, calling in Ms. Mary Joy Reinards. Ms. Reinards, can you hear us and can we hear you?
I hear you just fine.
Thank you so much. All right, could I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have visitor comment. And actually, if I see that the laptop is being open now, I do have some visitor comment. If you did not get a chance to sign in after I called the initial visitor comment, feel free to just raise your hand and we'll sign you in, maybe even after you speak. But I do have, now, I'm going to say, I do have two sign-ins here under the same individual, so I'm not sure. You get three minutes to speak total. It's not three minutes per topic. So tell you what, I'm going to call and I'm just explaining this first. So, but I have your name down twice here. Sometimes it's a computer glitch, sometimes it's not. If you are a single individual and you wish to speak twice tonight and you extend beyond your initial three minutes, then I will tell you that we also have a visitor comment section at the end. So let's say you're going to address, you know, lunch, milk for three minutes in the beginning of the session and you want to address, you know, recess equipment at the end of our meeting, you are welcome to speak a total of six minutes tonight, just not all at once. It's not per topic, if that's understood. And if you have any questions, when I call your name, you can come up. Or maybe you signed in for a friend, I don't know, and then we'll clarify that. But I have, and forgive my pronunciation, Jean?
I said Phil.
Philip? I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, Phil did.
Phil? Phil? I have Phil coming to the mic here. You are, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I did talk to him.
Oh, well then, perfect. Tell you what. But just let our, at some point tonight, you can let our Board Secretary Anne Lobley know the other name of the friend and then we'll have it for the record that it's not one person speaking for six minutes. Or you can state it at the mic, we just, that's great. So whichever one of you would like to come up first, you're more than welcome to take the mic. Or you can come up together and stand together, whichever, whatever you'd like. Come on up. What's that? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, every, yeah, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. How you guys are doing tonight?
Fine, thanks. And you have your three minutes there. And we can, we can hear you, right? Yeah.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Good.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm just here as a parent and fellow member of the community. Recently, I've been looking into somewhat of the middle schools, I would say, not necessarily just suspension policy, but behavioral policy, which seems to be like, from what it was stated, was a zero tolerance policy, which I find does not leave enough of an opportunity for either the child or the parent to effectively communicate their side of the story or to provide much of an appeal. As for what your website says, any suspension or any behavioral incidents that's happened that involve suspension over three days, the parent will be allowed an opportunity to appeal or, or to, that would have the possibility to remove the suspension. But any suspension below three days, we have no avenue of communication or any avenue to appeal said punishment. I think that, that creates, like, a rigging of the system in a kind of a way. Because then, all administrators get to do now is, as long as you punish for one to two days, you will never give the parent an opportunity to possibly give their side of the story or to appeal a said suspension or a detention of that sort. And I feel like we should have an opportunity, our voices should be heard as parents. And I think at times that we are trying to punish adolescents. And I just don't know if that works when we have tons of teachable moments, when we could teach these young men and women. I'm specifically leaning towards the young men because that's who is in my school right now. And these moments are being missed because they're, these young men are being punished and then we're losing them in where we can teach them something and how to be better men and how to be better students and how to be better people. And from what I'm noticing, once they're punished, you shut them down, where now you lose that ear and you lose that opportunity where you can just correct the behavior, or, you know, my wife's a teacher, or redirect, as you would like to say. And instead, what we're doing is we're losing these moments. We're making these kids frustrated because they're, they're losing their voice. And I would like something done about that, if possible. Right on time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. And yes, perfect timing, absolutely. And yes, if we have the other, if you could just state your name or, you know, David Humphrey? Okay. Take your time. You know, you're good.
I'm ready to go. So I came in support of Phil because I've had similar experiences with the disciplinary system in the middle school. And so I, whereas Phil spoke to a policy issue, which I think it was good to pull up, to bring up, I'm going to speak to a sense of proportion regarding punishments such as detentions or suspensions for minor, minor infractions in the name of zero tolerance and sometimes punishment of normal adolescent behavior. So specifically, policies that, as an example, I have a son too, and boys always seem to do this stuff. They never drill it in their heads. But my buddy, my, my son was walking with his buddy in the hall and bumped his buddy towards a girl who he may or may not have a crush with, crush on. And because of that interaction, my son now has after-school detention for what I would perceive as a, like, a blatantly normal adolescent type of behavior, teasing one's friends in a playful manner, not inciting a fight, but in a playful manner, and flirtation. So the, so in discussions with Phil, my perspective has been there's this use of a zero tolerance policy to, against minor infractions, where I would normally say a zero tolerance policy against weapons, against drugs in school, against bullying, against violent acts. Okay, but a zero tolerance policy against these normal adolescent behaviors, I think is a step too far. And so, other than that, I do agree that the punishments we've seen for these minor, these relatively minor behaviors have also been under this three-day limit. And so, really, it's the ability to, as of the parent, to say or do anything about the punishments is, is limited. But that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Lobley, do you have what you need for recording purposes? Thank you. All right, that concludes visitor comment for this, this first portion of the meeting, unless I missed someone, but I'm not seeing an indication that I have. Thank you for your comments and we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda. All right, thank you. Next, we have the executive session summary from the board solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Gaiman. The full board had a executive session to discuss a real estate matter on November 11th and the full board had an executive session tonight before this board meeting to discuss personnel matters.
Thank you ver, um, thank you very much. All right, Justice Secretarial note, we were making note for something else next time. All right, moving on. Thank you for that, Dr. Mann. Can I have a motion to approve the board minutes of October 28th and November?
Motion.
Motion in a second? Perfect. We have a motion with Ms. Cruz and a second from Mr. Carney. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Lobley, can you hear Ms. Reinards' voter? Do you need me to repeat? You're good? Perfect. Moving on to the superintendent update. Dr. Mann?
Thank you, Mrs. Gaiman. I'm going to defer most of my report tonight. Is Lillian?
Yes, they're, they're behind the podium, yes. Lillian and Robert.
Robert, I see you now, okay. Well, thank you for coming. These are our student representatives for this evening's meeting. And so if you come to the podium and, and thank you for joining us and we look forward to your report. Okay?
Hi, guys. I'm Lily. I'm also a senior here at Southernly High School. I am the captain of the Southernly High Girls soccer team as well as the captain of the Southernly High Girls swim and dive team. I am also the co-administrative and community liaison with Robert for student council. I'm an active member of Minithon Ecology Club and National Honor Society as well as Meister Singers. I am an officer for the Southernly High Student-Athlete Leadership Council as well as a member of the Colonial League Student-Athlete Leadership Council. And then outside of school, my family and I run a 100% all-volunteer nonprofit organization where we answer the emergent needs of families that have premature babies in the NICU.
We'd like to start out tonight with some student recognition. As for the SLHS Drama Department, the SLHS Drama Dodge, ooh, oh my gosh, excuse me.
You're totally good. You can just slow right down, we're good. Don't worry, you're not on three minutes. That'd be a problem. Fifty-one, fifty-one seconds, Robert. You gotta get this done. Now, go ahead.
All right. The SLHS Drama Department has completed their fall production of Knock Knock. There are many talented students highlighted and production has already begun for the spring musical of Legally Blonde.
Now on to speech and debate. We received notification today that one student has just reached Premier Distinction, which is the highest degree in the National Speech and Debate Association Honor Society. Congratulations go out to Oren Bosser on this outstanding achievement. Fewer than 3% of NSDA members earned Premier Distinction prior to graduation. This smile is a celebration of the hundreds of hours Oren has spent preparing, practicing, and competing to hone their communication and leadership skills.
And she's right there.
She is.
For some interscholastic, interscholastic athletics, our fall sports recap. The, our boys' cross-country, girls' volleyball and golf teams have all, are all Colonial League champions this year. And our field hockey, football, golf, and girls' volleyball teams are all District 11 champions. Additionally, the field hockey and girls' volleyball teams hosted state playoff games for the first time in school history.
For football. Football has made Southernly High School history by reaching the semifinal round of the state football playoff bracket. On Saturday afternoon, November 23rd, the boys took on Juniata out in Shmoken. The boys played an incredible team game, coming away with a 45-7 victory. This victory has sent the team the farthest in playoffs in school history. The team will be taking on the District 12 champion Bonner Prendy Friars this Friday at 7:00 PM at Central Bucks West High School. Tickets are only available online on the PAA website.
Winter sports are fully underway and begin official gameplay next Monday, December 2nd. On a special note, Wednesday, December 4th, will be the inaugural match for the SLHS Girls Wrestling Team. The match will be at 7:00 PM in the SLHS Gymnasium. Now, to finish off with some upcoming events. November 26th, we have parent-teacher conferences from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. November 27th, we have early dismissal for students at 11:25 AM. November 28th through December 2nd, there's no school for students as it is fall break.
On December 17th, the Southernly High School Music Department will hold their annual winter concert at Zoner Arts Center at 7:00 PM. On December 20th, No Place for Hate will be holding their annual multicultural fair. From December 23rd to January 1st, there's no school for students as it is winter break. And then January 16th to January 22nd are the high schools' midterm exams. On January 17th, there's no school for students as it is Act 80 Day. And January 20th, there's also no school for students as it is Martin Luther King Junior Day. On January 23rd, it is the last day of our second quarter. And January 27th, there will be a senior class meeting outlining end-of-school-year events, including graduation. And then course selection for the 2025-2026 school year will start in February. Thank you.
Lillian, are you taking questions? I asked you a question.
Sure.
I understand that you are raising funds in our school.
Yes.
For amazing work that your foundation does.
Yes.
And that, those are, would you tell us about what it is you're doing and what your foundation is trying to accomplish?
Yeah.
And just so everybody knows, say that it's the name of your foundation so folks can support it.
So my name is Lillian Hope and our foundation is called Lilly's Hope. I was born seven weeks early. I weighed 2 pounds 12 ounces, 15 inches long. I had a brain bleed, chest tube, was put on an oscillator, ventilator, different-sized kidneys. I almost died. I was bat-sized in the NICU. It was a whole mess. I spent a month in the NICU. Came home at 3 pounds 11 ounces. Was failure to thrive until the age of five. And then kind of went through a whole mess of stuff. And then my brother was also born a month early. He was premature. He's 11 now. We're both totally good now. But we wanted to help the families who went through what my parents went through with my brother and I. So Lilly's Hope answers the emergency needs that families have when they have a premature baby in the NICU. We give them specialized care packages. Each one is worth at least $250. Diapers, wipes, pacifiers, bottles, clothing, really anything that they could need. And then we also help them specifically if they need special car seats, special monitors, anything that they could need. And in January, because I'm a senior for the swim team, we are doing a donation drive throughout all the schools in the district. So we are doing hand sanitizers, hand soaps, clothing, I believe diapers and wipes. And it's going to be the whole month of January and we're going to collect for Lilly's Hope. So, which is awesome. And it's going to be a huge help because we're all volunteer. So everything that we get will go right to the families.
Thank you for your story. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
And the great work that you and your foundation have done.
Thank you.
Should I let you know when you donate?
Oh, okay. We have a website and you can donate right through the website. And then we have annual events every year, like a gala golf outing. But really donations online. But they go a huge way. We've helped over 6,000 families across 49 states. We have 18 hospital partners and one corporate partnership. So really, all the donations that we're going to get in January are going to go right to the families and be a huge help, so.
Thank you. And so people can donate, just Google Lilly's Hope if you, online, if you want to investigate and donate. Thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm just going to very briefly say that we have exciting thing on the agenda tonight. We'll, we'll be spending like about $10 million, but doing really great work on the roof project at the middle school and at Liberty Bell as well as units in both places. I want to thank Mr. Pepe, Mr. Boyer, the Facility Committee for the hard work that's been going into this. And, and as I was talking, Mr. Boyer, this is a, a great thing that we have to do. It's not an exciting thing, but very soon, we're going to be here talking about things like library expansion and all-day kindergarten and all kinds of really, really exciting things, although what we're going to be approving tonight is a very, very important thing. So thank you to all for doing it. It's, it's again, a kind of a jumping point to new and, and bigger things we'll be talking about in the new year. But some nuts and bolts, very positive things on the agenda. I want to thank all involved for getting it there.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our, back to our agenda. Yeah, the next item, I'm just frozen whenever I lock screens. I'll just use this. Next item is curriculum, student, staff services. We have, um, Sorry, we're going to go this route. I know an old administrator used to do this and I used to laugh, but now I'm doing it myself. I'm prompting this up on my computer. Thanks for the paper copy. We have curriculum, under curriculum, student and staff services, grade six through nine math core programming. We have big ideas learning. Can I have a motion to approve? Big ideas learning. Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. This is our math program for the Southernly High School District. I know Ed Committee has been talking about us. You gave us an over, a great overview last time. Does any have, anyone have any questions or comments, either from administrators or, I think we, we gave a great presentation last time. And so, seeing no other questions or comments about this math curriculum, could, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to our, back to our agenda. The, Yeah, the next item, I'm just frozen whenever I lock screens. I'll just use this. Next item is curriculum, student, staff services. We have, um, Sorry, we're going to go this route. I know an old administrator used to do this and I used to laugh, but now I'm doing it myself. I'm prompting this up on my computer. Thanks for the paper copy. We have curriculum, under curriculum, student and staff services, grade six through nine math core programming. We have big ideas learning. Can I have a motion to approve? Big ideas learning. Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. This is our math program for the Southernly High School District. I know Ed Committee has been talking about us. You gave us an over, a great overview last time. Does any have, anyone have any questions or comments, either from administrators or, I think we, we gave a great presentation last time. And so, seeing no other questions or comments about this math curriculum, could, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Mrs. Gaiman, just to,
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Carney.
Just to thank you again to District Committee, the, the head teachers and the grade-level representatives that looked, narrowed it down, went through the whole process. Thank you, Dr. Trinkle and Tamara, for your leadership too.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Yes. Thank you, thanked, especially this time of year, getting people together and to weigh and give their feedback is a tricky but also necessary and much appreciated thing. We don't have anything under Special Education and Student Services nor Technology. Under Business and Finance, I have items 8A, B, C, and, Ms. Boyer, do we have to take the Act 1 index separately? Okay. And so, could I have a motion to approve items 8A, the bills list, B, the treasurer's report and investment report, C, the property tax refunds as of November 2024, and D, the approval of the Act? Motion to approve the resolution with regard to Act 1, that is, to not exceed the Act 1 index
So moved.
for this tax year. Thank you for all of those items. Motion to Dr. Wayack in a second?
Second.
Whoa, all right. Well, choose someone, because everyone's seconded it was Lobley. All right. Thank you. All right, so any questions or comments on these? As we all know, with the Act 1 index, I believe Mr. Pepe gave an explanation. We're all familiar now that we vote now to not exceed the state-set increase. We will not exceed a certain percentage in this year. It doesn't really, 4%? Thank you. I didn't want to quote it exactly. 4%? So we absolutely are just voting to not exceed that in a tax increase this year. Any other questions about any of the other items? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to support services. We have that bid award for the middle school roof contract and that Dr. Mann was talking about earlier. We have a middle school roof contract, a Liberty Bell roof contract, a middle school rooftop unit replacement, and a Liberty Bell rooftop unit replacement as well. Those are the four items.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Wayack. Thank you, Ms. King. Any questions or comments on these items? Again, we've gotten good explanations before. I just want to thank the Facilities Committee for that. But Dr. Wayack, I see, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to thank the Facilities Committee. I want to thank Mr. Pepe, really the, all administration and the board over the last, you know, four years. I, you know, it's not really sexy, you know, as, as Dr. Mann kind of explained. We're talking about a fair amount, you know, significant amount of money, $10 million. But, you know, I think prior to Mr. Pepe and, and Dr. Mann coming on board, I, I don't know that there was a huge, a plan in place to address these needs at the building level. You know, I just want to thank all the work that you've done to, to, you know, help to ensure that our buildings are, you know, they're safe and they will remain effective for the community for decades to come. So I think it's really important. And I want to thank the whole board for, for, you know, supporting this. The Facilities Committee for getting it, getting it done. So, again, it's not sexy, but it's kind of what we're here for and it's really important. So I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you. And actually, Dr. Wayack, you bring up a really good point. It's funny with how boards work and with turnover, inevitable turnover. It's, it is really difficult to know from the folks who sat in these chairs before what came before and the planning that came before. But it is really great to know that we might not be sitting here knowing what plans came before or the direction that came before, but it's great when we do have that kind of turnover that administration like Mr. Pepe and Facilities can kind of pick up and take over and continue with, with that plan. So yeah, sometimes we sit in these chairs not knowing what came before, but,
I think it's, it is important that, that, that the community understands that I think they did a really, really good job of prioritizing, of making a list. It's something, I think if Mr. Mond were here, you know, I, I don't want to speak for him completely, but he would thank you. I know that. I guess it's something he pushed from the very beginning to, to make sure that we have a priority list for our facilities to make sure that we are addressing these needs. So I think it's, it's just very important. I think you guys did a great job.
And these roofing projects, I know there was some, somewhat of a delay, but we now, these will be on track to be done over the summer, so it won't interfere with education. Is that correct, Mr. Pepe?
That is correct. These projects are for the summer coming up.
Perfect, perfect. So those will be in place. Thank you so much. Moving on.
We have to call the questions still.
Oh, did I not? I'm sorry. Could I please have the, yeah, could I please call the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Yes. We're good, all good. Thank you for that. Moving on to, Human Resources. I have a motion, could I have a motion to approve the items as presented in the Human Resources Report? And also, could that motion please include the, will be on track to be done over the summer, so it won't interfere with education. Is that correct, Mr. Pepe?
That is correct. These projects are for the summer coming up.
Perfect, perfect, so those will be in place. Thank you so much. Moving on. We have to call the questions still. Oh, did I not? I'm sorry, could I please have the, yeah, could I please call the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Yes, we're good, all good. Thank you for that. Moving on to... Human Resources, I have a motion, could I have a motion to approve the items as presented in the Human Resources Report? And also, could that motion please include the item B, the affiliation agreement with Western Governors University?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Any questions or comments on these items? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to Committee Reports. I know we have kind of an odd timing at the moment, and we did have Committee Reports at the last meeting, so were there any Committees meet in the interim, and do we have any other updates? We do, Mr. Carney.
As mentioned, LCTI is meeting tonight, so I couldn't be in two places, so Mr. Mann is there and I'm here. ACMC met this month, and we agreed to some slight changes on the course and tuition approval forms, and we also approved classes for two employees.
Thank you, Mr. Herring, much appreciated.
Just for awareness for Facilities, so obviously tonight, we saw the critical things that needed to be addressed and approved, so thank you to the board, thank you to Mr. Pepe for putting that forth, and continuing to excel and exceed everything from a facility standpoint. In terms of talking about the items that obviously people don't see, because they're on top of the roof, the, I did get an update from Dr. Trinkle and Mr. Pepe on the library project that the Facilities Committee has kicked off, and both are very pleased with the progress that is going forth on that, so we look forward to getting some more information. We will be canceling the Facilities Meeting for December. Yes, we did not have one here at the beginning of November due to some scheduling issues, but we will reconvene that first week of January, which is, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the 7th of January for Facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. All right, moving on...
Ms. Gaiman?
Yes.
I could give a little one on Technology Committee.
Oh sure, because it was the same day last night.
It was the same night.
I apologize.
Which worked very nicely.
There you go. I apologize, go ahead, Ms. Torva.
So we did talk about, there were a few items that we focused on, the implementation of Infinite Campus, as it's a massive project, like, I'm gonna venture, the roofing projects will be this summer. And the committee discussed how we can provide support for the ongoing implementation with partnership with Berks IU, RIU, CLIU, looking with technicians and training, and really be available to our staff to be more familiar with the functionality of Infinite Campus and our historical data moving forward. So we are moving in the right, right, I can't form a sentence, I must have turkey on the brain, we are moving in the right direction. We also did talk about our student devices, and we're looking at different options, what is best suited, that aligns with our curriculum and the needs of our students, and aligns with our staff, and what takes place in the classroom, that will be continued, we are starting those conversations, and I'll work with Mr. Fluck, our Director of Technology, and Dr. Mann on that next meeting, because that one, we're driving pretty quickly, and we're anxious to make that decision. We started to talk about security, and that will be a follow-up at our next meeting, and when you say "security," it's not just like locks on the doors, it's a lot of the more techy things to protect and be private, and ensure our data, all data, is secure. I think that was it. But we're looking for a meeting soon to wrap up this calendar year, and, you know, Santa's coming, and there could be some good things to come.
Thank you, Ms. Torva. Any others, anyone else? All right, moving on, we have new business and other business? Any items under those?
Just my notes.
Yeah. Mr. Carney, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to tack on to the announcement, not for Santa, but for Wednesday is the opening ceremony for the girls wrestling.
Yes, please do.
And I think they announced that.
They did.
So that's on Wednesday versus Lee Hyten, here at home. I just wanted to update the board, we have 20 girls in both the junior high and varsity program, which I thought was just awesome, you know, I know when we first, you know, we had some spirited debate over approving this, and I, you know, thanked the board for ultimately unanimous support for girls wrestling. And I think one of the questions was, are we gonna have anybody come out, right? I think we kind of talked about that, so I just got word that there's 20 girls, there's three 7th graders, eight 8th graders, seven 9th graders, one 11th grader and one 12th grader, so there's actually 18 girls from 7th to 9th grade, so I think that's really great. A couple things that other districts did not do is they did not necessarily support both the junior high and a high school program, and I think just those numbers, I think, demonstrate the importance of doing that, so that we can build a program, so I just want to thank the board, you know, for that support. I want to thank Administration, and Mr. Spangler especially, who's not here, he's done a great job of, you know, advocating and getting them a full schedule, which has been really incredible, so I think it's something to be, the whole board should be proud of.
Thank you.
It's also nice that our athletic director, Mr. Spangler, has a good wrestling background that also kind of helped usher this along and get a good coaching candidate in place here at Southernly High, so it's exciting.
Thank you. And Mr. Carney?
I was just gonna throw out, sorry I didn't notice this before, but last week was American Education Week, so I just wanted to thank our SLSD employees for their efforts, teachers and all the educational support staff. And I want to thank families and community members for their work helping in education, too. Parents are their first teachers, and, you know, keep asking students how they're doing in school and how you can help. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, yes. I appreciate that. Yes, I was gonna, I have another comment as well, but if you'd like to go first, absolutely.
I don't know, again, you may not be able to answer this, but I did one, you know, since we had community members speak to some concerns that they had had. I know, you know, I don't know that we can speak specifically to the policy or make any adjustments to the policy, but I think it would be nice to just discuss, and just to hear from an administration standpoint, if you hear that, that, you know, there's community members, there's parents who feel like their voices cannot be heard. I know for a fact that that's not our administration, and that's not our district, you know, that parents' voices can be heard regardless of how many days there's a suspension, so I don't know, Dr. Mann, if you could speak to that, and maybe just how, what would be the appropriate chain of command for a parent to reach out and ultimately, you know, address concerns that they may have in the district with regard to, you know, some punishments or detentions or things like that? I'm sure there's a process in place that would be nice for the community to hear.
Yeah, well, sure. And first, you know, anything I say is respectful of the experiences that our parents have had here, so, but my sincere hope and belief is that our administrators are available at all times for issues large and small. And, you know, there are, like, due process rules that are reflective of state laws, for example, so it is very true that, that a hearing and a certain level of due process occurs when three days exist, when three days occur, and that's something that's a Pennsylvania law that exists, and that does not, for example, occur when there's a detention or any punishment less than 10 days, if, if, or three days, if however, a suspension goes beyond 10 days, then there's a new level of due process that actually parents get to go, come to the board to talk about that. So, really, I think the issue is there's two aspects to it, right? The first is the actual rules and regulations with respect to due process, which are largely driven by the state and the code, but more, far more importantly, is that we must communicate constantly that our doors are always open, and that we always wish to engage in parents and to constructively work together to help kids out, right? And it's not a matter of keeping score and black checkmarks, or, you know, red Xs or whatever it is, but rather a cooperative effort to, you know, move forward and to preserve the most positive learning environment we possibly can. So, without really addressing any specifics, those are our aspirations, I think we do a good job living up to them, not always, and to the extent that we don't, we very much want, you know, to reengage and to discuss, and further, I think to your question, Dr. Wayack, you know, ideally, a parent would call a teacher to say, hey, I'm a little concerned about what happened in class today, and if things don't get resolved at that level, then, you know, the assistant principal to principal, but, but Dr. Trinkle and I are always available, and we never, never refuse a meeting with parents, and again, we don't always come to an agreement with how things are working out, we try, but it doesn't always happen, but our doors are always open, and we will, and I will say myself, I have never refused a meeting for a parent, never would intend to, and so that's our, you know, that's our approach, and again, specific circumstances are hard to address, and that's our aspiration, and to the extent that we're not meeting it, we will continue to try, but I think we do try to at least engage with our parents.
And Dr. Wayack, yes, you referenced, I said I also had the same inclination, I wanted to loop back and circle back to that, and twofold, then thank you, Dr. Mann, for being willing to weigh in and explain that right off the bat like that. But yeah, I actually want to thank the people who, the dads who came to speak tonight, to say that the way in which, you know, when you have a concern about our school community, it grows better when you bring it up, and the way in which you came to the microphone here and discussed your concerns is always welcome, and I want to thank you for doing it in such, you know, a nice and appropriate manner. I will say that I also appreciate what was said this evening about seeing discipline through the lens of an opportunity to teach how to do better, instead of, you know, some things we're doing to shut down. And I know, you know, nobody likes, including the people doing it, to administer discipline, but it's really important to see it through the lens of, let's take this as a teaching opportunity to kind of build a better way. And we, in this district and in these hallways, we can always do better at that, and I would like to think that we would continue to look at ways to be better in that, and I think as a parent who has had two children, one graduated and one will, you know, right around the corner, I have shared experiences and concerns that mirror yours, and I think that when I do speak up and when I have spoken up and gotten involved, I see positive improvements, but we have more to improve on that front, so I would encourage and thank you to continue to have these conversations. And as Dr. Mann said, feel free to always reach out, email addresses are, you know, abounding on that website, whomever, a teacher or administrator, whomever it is, and that also, like, we do reflect, and we look at things like those student handbooks every single year, and Dr. Trinkle, I will say firsthand, has, you know, I've said to her, hey, I have a suggestion or a problem, she's like, you know what, as a parent, I have that problem too, let's change the handbook, let's change that rule, because that just makes sense. So, please, as those, you know, those come up in spring or February, not, just around the corner, so if you have suggestions, or if anyone has suggestions about how we can better improve our student handbooks and our student discipline, and if you see gaps, I know a few years ago, for instance, in-school suspension of a student sitting there, twiddling thumbs and doing worksheets, versus in-school suspension of a student, you know, having chats throughout the day of what went wrong and how can we do better, and this is just a learning opportunity, can make a world of difference even when we do have to give them. So, I thank you, and I know that we'll continue to have conversations like this to improve, because I think, you know, there are improvements to be made, and we can have these conversations together, and the topics you brought up are very important, and I share them as a parent who went through the system, I empathize with you. All right, any other new business or old? All right, in that case, there is information only regarding graduate study and professional development and field trips there, no votes required, just for your edification. I will click back to visitor comments to see if we have anyone signed up either on the website while we're sitting here, or if you haven't, anyone in the audience wish to speak now? And seeing no, none, we have no more visitor comment for this evening, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Carney. Thank you, Ms. King, we are adjourned. Everybody, thank you so much, have a very happy holiday and Thanksgiving, and really give thanks for your teachers out there, because this is a crazy time of year with conferences, et cetera, et cetera. Good night.